I'd like to call again, I'm sorry we're late, but we're here now. And let's stand for the clinch. Okay, adoption and approval of the agenda for February 25th, 2020. Have you two approve?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special recognition, okay, Students of the Month. So, let's start with the representatives from Mary Collins School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Serena D. White. I'm an eighth grader at Mary Collins Cherry Valley, and I'm proud to present Magrada James as one of our students of the semester. Magrada James is an eighth grader at Mary Collins Cherry Valley, which she has attended since first grade. Over the eight years she's gone to the school, she's made many close friends, and made an enormous impact on the students and teachers around her. Magrada is a friendly, special person who everyone seems to get along with. When asked to describe her, Magrada's friends said that she is energetic, funny, kind, and optimistic. Magrada's teachers, past and present, agree. Mr. Yu mentioned that he appreciates her patience positively and gentle encouragement Magrada approaches for life and to work with. She is always ready to help anyone, anyway, in those, so with a smile on her face. She also has the confidence to not worry about what others think and just be herself. Magrada will attend Creedham High School next year. After graduating, she hopes to spend time backpacking around Europe. Then she says to settle down and start a career as a business owner running a bakery and making flower floral arrangements for weddings. Magrada is an all-around amazing person. That's one of my friends. I know that she'll be able to do whatever she wants and do anything she thinks of.
It was like recognizing the parents. Landon is also an eighth grader at our school. He has been going to our school since kindergarten. Landon has also been influencing everybody around him since day one. His friends have described him as funny, unkind, savvy, and athletic. Landon's teachers know him as goofy, unconventional, and thoughtful. He has always had, he always has a unique con- construct- construct and contribution to make a brilliant connection to share or an approach to a problem that is miles away from what everyone has been doing. He is also humble, gentle, and a wonderful mentor and a role model to the younger students he gets to work with. Landon is known for his math medical, math, ma- yeah, mathematical and scientific mind, and plans to continue his academic growth at Petaluma High School. Following graduation, he plans to get an advanced degree in astronomy. Anyone who knows Landon and knows Lan- knows that he will accomplish wonderful things thoughtful, moral, and scientific. Okay, Representatives from Kennelworth.
Philip. Philip has been chosen as Student of the Month by his team of teachers because of his leadership qualities and consistent pursuit of excellence in everything he does. Kennelworth's teachers have many great things to say about Philip. Mr. Russo says Philip is the best of the best in PE. He excels both physically and academically and has maintained an A+ for the entire year, which means his achievement percentage is 100%. He comes to PE every morning ready to go, puts his best foot forward, and does it all with a positive attitude. I cannot ask for anything more from a student than what Philip gives on a daily basis. And by the way, he is a pretty good dancer. Mr. Raya, Philip's history teacher, says Philip is very smart. He works well with others and is always enthusiastic about class. His presentations and projects are creative and go above and beyond expectations. His science teacher, Ms. Crozier, agrees as she says Philip is a great student. He always turns in quality work and is willing to help others. All of his hard work has paid off, as Philip has maintained a 4.0 GPA for the full two years he has spent at Kennelworth. Philip has successfully navigated a rigorous schedule of classes, including accelerated math, advanced English, and leadership. He is respectful and helpful to peers and staff making him a true leader on our campus. Outside of school, Philip is active in community sports, including 57 Petaluma, 57 Petaluma American Baseball League, which went to the World Series last summer. Philip is proud of his athletic achievements, which also include playing on the Kennelworth basketball team. Philip has been a member of the Cub Scouts since first grade and the Boy Scouts since sixth. He now gets to act as a leader and role model for the younger kids who participate. Philip is a successful young person with a bright future ahead of him. Kennelworth is thrilled to honor this outstanding student. Angelica Summers. Angelica has been chosen as Student of the Month by her teachers because she is truly wonderful. Angelica's teachers all jumped at the opportunity to compliment her as a person and as a student. Mr. Ryder, Angelica's math teacher, says Angelica is one of the most amazing students that I've had. She always comes to class with a smile and is ready to work. If she can't figure out a problem, she will ask questions that are meaningful and helpful. Angelica is always polite and willing to work with anyone in class. I've seen her during a team test take the time to help other student, to help another student, so they will pass. Mr. Raya, Angelica's history teacher, echoed this sentiment when he said, "Angelica is one of the nicest and kindest students that I've ever had." She is a great student and she takes risks even when she knows she might fail. She always tries hard, listening intently, and applying new ideas into her work. She is truly a great student and deserves to be Student of the Month. Angelica's science teacher, Ms. Crozier, wanted to note that Angelica is very creative and always goes the extra mile in her assignments. And Mr. Martin, who teaches PE, stated that Angelica is cheerful, respectful, and patient with others. Wow, so many great qualities. Outside of school, Angelica enjoys playing soccer, which she has played both indoor and outdoors since third grade. The team she is currently playing on is so good, they have started competing against the A-trip above them. As a defensive player, there is a lot of pressure to keep the other team at bay, and Angelica is ready to take on that challenge. Angelica has many personal interests, including skateboarding, spending time with her family, and volunteering at her family church, the Resurrection Carriage. When asked what her favorite class was, Angelica enthusiastically said KTB, because I love getting to be creative. After high school, Angelica is interested in possibly pursuing a career in the veterinary science, as she really loves animals. We at Kennelworth are proud of you, Angelica. Keep up the excellent work. Congratulations.
Representative from Petaluma Junior High? Luis Martinez?
We are honored to present Luis Membriela Martinez as one of our February 2020 Student of the Month recipients. Luis was born in Santa Rosa on February 20th, 2006. As a student who grew up in a Spanish-speaking home, he has really excelled in all academic areas and is an exemplary young man.
Estamos orgullosos de presentar a Luis Membriela Martinez como uno de los estudiantes del mes de febrero de 2020. Luis nació en Santa Rosa el 20 de febrero de 2006. Como un estudiante que creció hablando español en casa, él realmente se ha destacado en todas las materias académicas y es un joven ejemplar.
After his recent English language designation, Luis focused on improving his grades. Last year, Luis maintained a B average despite having some challenges in English class. This year, he has all As and Bs and is going strong. His goal is to continue improving his grades, eventually earning his high As in all of his classes. Luis's science teacher notes that Luis is a conscientious, polite, on task, hardworking, and a great lab partner. He works well with his fellow students. Another teacher comments, "Luis has been a pleasure to work with. He has a strong work ethic and has always shows up with a smile."
Después de su reciente reclasificación en el idioma inglés, Luis se ha enfocado en mejorar sus calificaciones. El año pasado, Luis mantuvo un promedio de B a pesar de tener algunos desafíos en la clase de inglés. Este año, él tiene solo A y B y sigue progresando. Su meta es continuar mejorando sus calificaciones y eventualmente sacar solo A en todas sus materias. Su maestro de ciencias dice, "Luis es concienzudo, educado, atento, trabajador, y un gran compañero del laboratorio." Él trabaja bien con todos sus compañeros de clase. Otro maestro comenta, "Ha sido un placer trabajar con Luis. Él tiene una fuerte ética de trabajo y siempre llega con una sonrisa."
Luis also has a variety of other interests. He's a solid member of the Petaluma Junior High School band, playing the trumpet for nearly four years. Last year, Luis danced in the local ballet folk karaoke. Luis has a natural curiosity and a strong interest in electronics. He loves to take apart electronic instruments and put them back together.
Luis también tiene otra variedad de intereses. Es miembro de la banda de Petaluma Junior High y toca la trompeta por cerca de cuatro años. El año pasado, Luis bailó con el baile folclórico local. Luis tiene una curiosidad natural y un fuerte interés en electrónica. Le encanta deshacer instrumentos electrónicos y los vuelve a armar.
At home, Luis is a great help. After doing his homework, Luis spends quality time with his family. His parents comment that he's kind, sweet, and thoughtful. He loves to help others and is a very loving young man.
En la casa, Luis es una gran ayuda. Después de hacer sus tareas, a Luis le gusta pasar el tiempo con su familia. Sus papás comentan que él es amable, dulce, y considerado. Le encanta ayudar a los demás y es un joven amoroso.
Luis Membriela Martinez is one of those students who warms your heart. He is smart, conscientious, and has a big heart. We are very proud to present Luis as a Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month.
Luis es uno de esos estudiantes que llega al corazón. Él es inteligente, consciente, y tiene un gran corazón. Estamos orgullosos de que Luis esté representando a Petaluma Junior High como el estudiante del mes.
Dara Alfred?
We are proud to present Dara, commonly known as DeeDee Alfred, as one of our Student of the Month for February 2020. DeeDee is a terrific student athlete and a great role model for our school and the community. DeeDee came to us via New York, where she was born on September 5th, 2006. She landed in our district when she started public school, and we were lucky to have her. In addition to being one of our top academic students, DeeDee keeps involved in school activities. She's been a strong team player on our track and field, volleyball, and cross-country teams, and served as a captain because of her commitment, hard work, and great support for the other players. She has been quite the athlete and also enjoys playing tennis and golf outside of school. Her PE teacher and track coach says, "Including her time at the sixth grade academy, DeeDee has been an intelligent, high-achieving, consistent student in every way. She's always respectful and reliable and has been a member of her school cross-country, track, and volleyball teams each year." DeeDee has earned many honors for her academic and athletic efforts, including the Coach's Award for volleyball. Beyond her sports and academic life, DeeDee gives a lot of thought to being kind and caring. She really thrives on helping others, whether it be her teammates, her family, her friends, or while providing community service. She spends a lot of her time helping visually impaired children and looks forward to learning American Sign Language so that she can expand her volunteer efforts. At home, DeeDee enjoys her free time. She hangs out with her friends and family and loves chilling with her dogs. Her parents are very proud of DeeDee. They comment, "Every day, it's great to see her focused on her studies and showing qualities of leadership and organization." We are very pleased to present this caring and hardworking young woman, DeeDee Alfred, to the board, and we are pleased to have her represent Petaluma Junior High School as Student of the Month.
Okay, Casa Grande, representing Casa. Representatives from Casa. Going once.
Petaluma High, first thing I'll pull up the notes.
Okay. Petaluma High, Representatives of Petaluma High.
So, we have Shereen Irvin, who is the December Student of the Month. I don't have Shereen's speech, but I do know Shereen. She's my friend, and she's awesome. She plays basketball, she's the captain of our student basketball team, and she scored 1,000 points. And she did a lot of AP classes, and she's really dedicated and sells really good big kids at school. Okay, next you have Eleonora Wong.
Eleonora is a passionate and delicate, dedicated student who tries to keep a busy schedule. She does this by taking challenging classes, spending time with family and friends, volunteering, and dancing. Some of the classes she has taken includes AP Physics, AP Calculus, and Art's Chemistry. This year, she plans on passing the AP Calculus and AP Physics exams. She enjoys helping people and has done that through becoming a lead career. Outside of school, most of her free time is taken up by doing ballet, which she's been doing since she was three years old. Through ballet, she has earned multiple scholarships to summer intensives. Additionally, she has received a main role in Nutcracker as a sugar pump dairy. This past year, she choreographed her own emerging piece. And after high school, she plans to continue doing it through college by mimicking it, in it, or possibly joining a company nearby. Her love for cats has come through time to volunteer at the Rudder Park Animal Shelter, where she cleans cages, does laundry, dishes and places animals. Through all her work in these years, she sees herself growing through college, senior, and continuing to learn. Her goal is to become a teacher that can help anyone she can. She'd also like to thank her family, teachers, and friends and cats for helping her complete the high school journey.
And next you have Cole Schaefer.
Cole Schaefer is a student at Petaluma High School, where he has been involved, where he has been an involved member in the student body participating in clubs, taking honors in AP classes, and maintaining a 4.0 GPA throughout his academic career. Agriculture has been important throughout Cole's life and has been a member of 4H for 13 years. 4H has taught him many life skills such as leadership, responsibility, dedication, good work ethic, respect, and how to communicate effectively. He has served as a vice president, editor, and historian for the Liberty 4H Club, as well as served as team leader for the dairy, for the dairy rabbits and dairy cattle. Cole has successfully completed at local, state, and national levels of all, with all the programs. In his spare time, Cole enjoys competing, or competitively shooting shotguns through the National Sporting Clays Association, hunting, fly fishing, and being outdoors. Cole has been accepted into Iowa State University's Agricultural Mechanical Engineering Program. ISU is currently ranked number one for this program, and Cole decided to start there in the fall. Additionally, Cole has an interest in wildland firefighting. Cole has worked as a service truck driver for fire dozer contracted with Cal Fire during the 2019 Kinkade Fires in the hopes to continue doing this for the 2020 fire season. Cole has been very successful throughout his high school career and worked very hard to achieve good grades, test scores, and has also worked very hard to be competitive with his dairy and rabbit projects and earning national, state, sectional, and local titles. He plans to continue to use his work ethic and life skills into his college career in life.
Casa ready?
Yeah. Ryan Anderson is a bright, hard-working and dedicated student. He's always taken great pride in doing his best work, and his grades have reflected that effort. He challenges himself with advanced classes and expands his knowledge inside and outside of school. Along with school, Ryan also spends his time playing baseball. Ryan has played on the Casa Grande baseball team for the first three years of his high school career. Ryan uses his time management skills to juggle schoolwork with his busy baseball schedule and has received a Scholar-Athlete Award for all three years he's played baseball. After high school, Ryan is planning to attend a four-year university and study biology and later enter the medical field. Brian has received tremendous support from family and friends and would like to thank them for his successes. And Zenus. Zenus is a diligent student who takes learning seriously. Outside of school, Zenus spends time playing the piano, programming, playing tennis, wasting time on the internet, and exercising outside. Each of these activities have provided him with a well-rounded high school experience. Zenus is currently the vice president of the Computer Science Club, where he teaches computer science to beginners. Zenus plans to play on the tennis team this spring with the goal of being on varsity. He has taken part in academic decathlon for two years, where his humble silver, humble sliver of persistence and academic diligence shines. Zenus plans to go to college and major in computer science.
I'm sure none of the other ones waste time on the internet, right guys?
One more. President, members of the school board, I would like to introduce Lorente Cruz-Matti, who is our president of CSA, to do a presentation of the CSA member of the quarter.
Thank you. Before I call her up, I'd just like to remind everybody who the classified folks are. We're the bus drivers, the food service people, the custodians, the secretaries. All of those people, instructional assistants, as you'll see. So I'd like to call up Lori Graham. Any of the members of the board, school districts, administrators, and members of the audience. It is my honor to introduce this quarter's member of the quarter, Lori Graham. Lori started her career with Petaluma City Schools at McDowell as a special ed assistant on November 15th, 2010. Now I'd like to read some of the wonderful things that were written about Lori and led to her being our member of the quarter. One of the other special ed assistants said these things. "Lori is enthusiastic and energetic every day at McDowell. She always sees the best in every student and finds the positive in even the most challenging students." Sound challenging situations, I apologize. "Lori is also friendly and develops and maintains great rapport with the kids. They like, respect, and trust her, which is why they work harder for her. She pays attention to individual struggles and never fails to offer support." While Lori's role here at McDowell is an instructional assistant, she is also a certificated teacher with a toolbox full of experience and knowledge above and beyond what is required to fulfill her role at McDowell. Lori's experience and fun-loving positive attitude greatly impact the lives of the students and community at McDowell. She honestly cares about each and every student, not just those in her SDC class, and is constantly encouraging them to reach their full potential. So, because she's awesome, I have a certificate for you for member of the quarter. And she wanted something useful, so I got her a Target card.
This is my first student, by the way. I'm very sure and happy that they're here today.
And we have one more.
So I am super excited to introduce, I want to, Director of Budget and Accounting, Bree Brown. So, in Bree's application documentation, she stated that her career goal is to continue to learn and challenge herself while making meaningful contributions for organization and community. She believes in lifelong learning and creating strong relationships. She has her Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from Chico. She has her Associate in Communications from St. Louis Chester Community College. She has spent the last 11 and a half to 12 years at Gerber Union School District, which is up near Chico. She oversees the budget right now of about $5 million, so she's coming down. And I'm going to slowly introduce her to the rest of the $100 million that we have. We're super excited. She's also worked at the County Office of Education, up at Hema County Office of Education, and worked in particular in the Special Education Department. So for us, it's a huge benefit with ourselves having consortiums. So I just can't tell you how excited I am for coming and joining our team. The good news, bad news is she wants to stay and get her district through budget development. Good news, bad news, she'll be starting July 1st for us. But we are planning some transition days, and so you probably will start seeing her here in May, April, May. So anyway, welcome, Bree.
Oh, thank you for the introduction.
Well, thank you for the introduction.
I'm glad that I was able to attend this board meeting. I don't know if every board meeting is like this, but it's been like a super honor to listen to all these great kids. I hope that maybe someday Phillip can teach me how to dance, because I know. Really look forward to being a part of the team. And my husband and I will be moving to Petaluma, so that's going to be exciting for us, because it's been amazing every single time we've been here.
Well, welcome, welcome to Petaluma. We will take a two-minute break. We will be back. We'll be back at 20.
Congratulations. 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 Great job.
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 Hi, miss. Oh my gosh. How's your birthday?
Congratulations.
Okay, we are readjourned. Is that readjourned? No, you're right. Rekindling, rekindling is what you want to say. Teacher. Correct. Right. Okay, we have rekindling. And we will start with comments from the public. Do you need a pencil?
Thank you. I forget how much time I have up there. Four minutes. Not nearly what I need to address this topic, and some of you I emailed with the board members, just hoping to really start a conversation about something I feel is super important. And this is probably my craziest time of year, too, with LPAC testing and conference translating. But I also feel like this is a really crucial time to address the issue of equity specific to class size as we go forward and plan for our next years. I have brought this issue up at DLEC meetings and in the LCAP, but I really don't feel like it's received the attention, and perhaps because there's just all the insight that I might have, having been in the classroom for over 20 years and worked with YELs and SCP kids for over 20 years. So if you haven't had a chance to look at the data that I sent out, you can look over someone's shoulder. To me, it is just glaring the inequities in our population, and we cannot longer deny the fact that we do have segregation in our mission, and it is no one's fault in this room. It's due to policies that were enacted years and years ago, but it is the way things are. I want to address the one-size-fits-all seating ratio that we have in this district and how unfair it is to our neediest kids. When we look at these numbers, something that you might not realize off the top of your head is what it really looks like in the classroom, when you see that 90% of kids are living in poverty. That means in any classroom, 90% of your kids, or a large percentage of your kids, do not have their own home. A lot of our kids are living an entire family in bedroom. They don't have a bed to sleep in. They often don't see their parents, because their parents are working several jobs. The school provides the majority of their nutrition. They spend half their waking hours, if not more, at our school, at Boys and Girls Club after school. When kids come to school, and no fault of their own or their families, without their basic needs of math, they have an even stronger need to have a strong connection with their teacher. We, this year, we've had, we've been lucky to have a measure D teacher, which enabled us to have some smaller classes in the lower grades. We also have some classes that are absolutely overflowing in areas that are unacceptable. We have two, two, three combination classes at second and third grade. Our, our math teacher has a group of over 32 students, I believe, that she's teaching math to every day, and I think five of those are newcomers, and, and the majority of them are English language learners. I don't know whether you are aware of the, the policy, the new OBR policy, and particularly principle three, that addresses systems and conditions and support effectiveness. Specifically in 3B, it gets into adequate resources, where it is very clearly spelled out in the, in the toolkit, that one of the priorities and responsibilities of the district is to pay attention to appropriate student placement in class size. There, I have been told that there's no research that smaller class size benefits children. I know that that's not true. I know many of you know that's not true. And I also have found, just in my spare time that I've had to quickly search, I've found extensive research that points to huge benefits, specifically for English language learners and for low economic, socioeconomic, uh, children. Is that it? Is that my timer? Okay. So, okay, well, I, I have extensive research that can back that up. I do want you to note that among the percentages there, McDowell is a leader in progress for our Yale members. And that's going to turn around, that's going to flip. Our last class that benefited from small class sizes graduated, they're now in seventh grade, they had an amazing class last year. It's, it's going to change drastically. I'm seeing the effects of that in the classrooms that I'm in, as I'm looking over the data of test scores. We need to ensure that these kids get what they need, so they can access, fairly access what they deserve to have. Okay? Thank you. I will follow up, and I would really like to be able to meet with some of you on a regular basis to continue to explore this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Report on activities and correspondence of school board. Busy, busy. Casa Grande High School American Government Class, LCAP meeting, Alternative Ed Options meeting, Coral Festival, side visit at Kennelworth, Casa Grande Girls Varsity Playoffs, Differentiate, differentiated assistance meeting about students with disabilities at SCO, meeting at McDowell with community donors and principal, P, Petaluma High School Trojan Showcase, AP Honors Overview, San Antonio High School for Dr. Victorias Visit, which I'm really sorry I missed, and CHIPA meeting for Mental Health Substance Abuse Workshop at Petaluma Healthcare District.
Busy couple weeks.
Okay. Next item is approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. And there's a what there. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve. I second.
Okay. Before we move on, questions?
Yeah, Chris, do we have the updated, yeah, per, per, the one that was on the agenda got cut off, the actual amounts? So. It was there. It was just on the fourth page. Oh, okay. I was waiting there, I can't see. Yeah, it just, so we've reattached an updated format. We left the original one there, but, because it did have it, but we attached the better format. We have a brand-new correspondence position, so I don't think she understood that format. This'll make it a lot easier to read.
Thank you. Just a, anyone? Did I ask you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
I just, about that, I just had a question about MentorMe. Is this, because I know that they're in a period of transition, and so I didn't, I actually did, what services, was this for the, working with the probation department?
So we have an MOU with MentorMe, and so they have continued to exist even though they are.
Right, they're, they're now under Petaluma People's Services. So I was just wondering how that, is that going to continue with Petaluma People's Services? The MOU as long as we can, at 25,000?
What MOU are we talking about?
For MentorMe. Well, that wouldn't change just because they got adopted by a new, but we'd probably have to get at least a sign.
Well, yes, it's a different organization. Yeah. I was just wondering, I was just curious, you know, I love MentorMe.
Yeah, you should.
Want to make sure that.
They've accepted their agreements for this year. Moving forward, it'll be.
So this is just with Petaluma People's Services?
Well, and I'm not sure that even though they, they're collapsing, we're, you know, that takes time, so I believe that MentorMe still exists, and so they're, they're merging as organizations. They're definitely still separate, I don't think.
Exactly. But the funding case is very difficult.
There's still going to be a, I understand, right?
See, it's just that currently Petaluma People's Services is taking over the administrative functions of MentorMe.
Right, but MentorMe will continue to exist right now as an organization, so we'll continue to pay them for the services that we're getting. At some point, they may say, okay, we're now going to merge with or eliminate the one nonprofit and go with people's services, but we have not heard that yet.
It may not be in their best interest to do that because of being marketing issues.
Yes, exactly. I was just wondering what services we hire them for. They're, they're servicing us through the CSI grant, I know, and then they do some other kind of outside, like individual school size. They'll do group for students and do kind of group sessions through that. So the woman who was here a couple of board meetings ago, and she was an ambassador at, at McNear, and she went through the, through MentorMe. She funded her as, because she's paid, isn't she? That's not MentorMe.
That's not MentorMe.
No. That's just, that's PTAs. Student advisor.
Student advisor at McNear, MentorMe, she's a volunteer with MentorMe.
Okay, that's separate, but she was presenting as a student advisor. Right.
Yeah, so the MentorMe MOU that we have for Carpe and Sonoma through CSI grant, so they're doing the, what is it, the suspension.
Yeah, they're working with probation or something.
Yeah, suspension, diversion program.
Oh, okay. That's great. Good. Any other comments? Did you get questions answered yet? Any other?
On the audit report on measure E and C, 8.2.9, this is Chris. I, I always want to teach myself about revenues here, and so I want to make sure I understand what this report says. And what I'm hearing, what I think I read, is that the two measures authorized 21 million and 68 million in bonds back in 2014. And am I correct that 21, roughly 21 between the two, that 21 million have been sold, or that we've received?
Proceeds.
Yes, and that there's still 50 million-ish available for sale? What is that? There was 14 million plus 36 million that was, I forgot what the word was.
We still have a final authorization that we have not utilized. In fact, it's funny you asked the question, because one of our financial advisors reached out to me earlier today saying it's a great time from a rate, you know, from an interest rate perspective to be selling bonds. So the issue with bonds is that we have to have a plan in order to expend all of the bonds we sell within three years, and it's a plan, or at least 85%. And so I'm happy to come back at the next meeting and kind of share with the board, here's where we are as of this point, because we do have a lot of projects that are underway and here for the summer that will spend down. And we can take a look at if the board has an interest in what would that plan look like if we sold the remaining authorization under both the elementary and secondary?
And the remaining authorization is that 14 plus 36-ish million? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
It'd be about that, yes.
Yeah, I'd really like to hear that. Thank you.
So the, I'm sorry, just to clarify, so there is a bond oversight committee, this report's going to them, and they're going to.
We've already emailed the report to them. There's a draft of the annual report that's already been reviewed by them. We did not have a call at the last meeting, somebody ended up being caught sick, so we're in the process of scheduling another meeting so we can finalize that report and bring it back to this, to this group, to the board.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other comments?
And I've got bound copies of that, too, if anybody was interested. I'll take one, but you're not right there. Okay, I'll leave them here so that you guys can.
Any other questions, comments?
Black house is getting a marquee. You said that's a big advantage.
Yes, where people actually are depressed. And they actually see it. Go sideways, and also, because Dr. Austin has left, so we, they did develop a communication out to the neighbors, they did flyers, and actually went door-to-door with people that lived right across the street, and there was very little response. I would like to go on record to say we're not considering any marquees at Petaluma High School, because there was a concern expressed by that neighborhood group that we were doing one at Casa, and the answer is no, not.
And it's being paid for by the boosters?
So the boosters are paying for both the marquee, which has already been ordered, and the installation and the electrical that we need to run. So we're overseeing those, we're overseeing it to make sure that it is installed and the electrical's done to code, but the boosters are funding it.
Anything else? Well, shall we vote? All in favor? I opposed? Action items. Resolution 1920-17 that the Board of Education at the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School designated, excuse me, designating an alternative holiday in lieu of a regular holiday in the 2020-21 school year. And that was admissions day?
Yes.
Was there?
So this should have, this actually, this should have come when we did, when we brought the calendars, and it did, so we're bringing it for a little bit late to the back. But California Ed Code 45206.5 says that not with any other provision of law, the governing board of the school district does not designate September 9th, known as California State Admissions Day, as a paid holiday for classified employees pursuant to this section. School district shall provide a substitute holiday. So we provided a substitute holiday. It happens to land on a Wednesday, we moved it to a Monday for a total three-day weekend, and that's why we're bringing it for both years.
Do I have a motion or a second?
I motion to accept. Action items both 9.11 and 9.11.2.
Both of those?
Both of those.
Okay. So that's for two calendar years.
Correct.
Right. So, second, did you say it? Okay. All in favor? I opposed? Okay, now we're on to the ugly one. 9.1.3, resolution 1920-21 of the Board of Education, the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School, reducing or discontinuing particular kinds of services by an additional 8.6 FTE for the 2020-21 school year. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion? Nobody's happy about this.
Yeah. So I, I was wondering, so I know that, you know, declining enrollment is obviously an issue, and when I read through this, you know, I was immediately struck by the positions that were targeted, which is teachers on special assignment, career of tech, music, music, and, you know, I'm surprised art isn't on here. And so, I mean, I'm sorry, that was not a fair comment. But, and I, you know, when, when we hear from the community, we hear that these are the very things that we want, and so I just.
Do I have a motion or a second?
I motion to accept. Action items, both 9.11 and 9.11.2.
Both of those?
Both of those.
Okay. So that's for two calendar years.
Correct.
Right.
So, second, did you say it?
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, now we're on to the ugly one. 9.1.3, resolution 1920-21 of the Board of Education, the Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School, reducing or discontinuing particular kinds of services by an additional 8.6 FTE for the 2020-21 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion? Nobody's happy about those.
That's reluctant.
I was wondering, so I know that, you know, declining enrollment is obviously an issue. And when I read through this, you know, I was immediately struck by the positions that were targeted, which is teachers on special assignment, career tech, music, music, and, you know, I'm surprised art isn't on here. And so, I mean, I'm sorry, that was not a fair comment. But, and I, you know, when we hear from the community, we hear that these are the very things that we want. And so I just was wondering what the process was, where these were.
So for a particular kinds of service, I think we got to think of it in terms of student interest, really. So in January, the comprehensive junior high schools, comprehensive high schools are asking their students, as well as the eighth graders going into ninth grade, what sort of classes are we, are students interested in? So students sign up for particular classes, and then we need to, we need to respond to that student, and say, "These are the kind of classes that we're going to be offering for next year as part of our program." That layered with, yes, some declining enrollment at particular schools. So we're looking at, you know, Pedaluma Junior as an example, as one school, where we're looking at some declining enrollment. How do we adjust what we're going to be offering for that school? The teacher on special assignment, I can kind of go through some of the lists. Teacher on special assignment was a grant, was funded through the CSI grant. We are, we're in the process of reapplying for the grant, but at this point, we need to, we need to be, this is a very conservative list. From this list, we're not expecting to have, because of attrition, we're not expecting to have very many at all actually, actual layoffs. So these are, this is a conservative look at how do we give the most flexibility to our, to our principals as they plan out services for next year for students? And it's really, it's based on what students are interested in taking next year. Will a lot of this come back? Some of the high schools may say, "I'm going to, I want to fund this through my, some of my site funds." But some of it's also categorically funded through, through our services, and some of that's not coming back next year.
And some of it, and to give some examples to that, we have two sections currently supporting career tech ed, and we don't know if we're going to get those two small grants, about 20,000 each, to support. So we have to put those sections on until we find out. Another example would be, we have a school site who's funding an additional section of math, and we don't know if they're going to make a decision to continue to do that, their PTA or foundation. So some of it is literally, we don't know about some of these funding sources, and unfortunately, having a March 15th date, a hard date, that we have to, we have to unfortunately bring this preliminary information to the board, so we have the flexibility to respond. And I agree that some of this stuff will probably come back once we actually get formal notification of some of the funding sources.
Do we know when those, when those notifications are going to happen?
It's all of the, yes.
When we hear back from a foundation, when we hear back from a grant, some of the money that comes back into these sections. But I think the good news is that there's very little, there'll be very little of the layoff notices that are actually going to impact our current staff.
Oh, that's good. So I guess it's a process question that I still have. You know, I spent some time with the auto teacher last week, and, you know, he's really trying to build that program where it was like blown up. And, and he's really good. He's brought in all of these cars, and, you know, he's dedicated to doing this, and his job is there. Although it sounds like it might be partially Casa and partially.
It is.
And so I guess my conservative.
I just talked to Mr. Maury, principal at Pedaluma High, who said he just had a conversation, and anyway, this is the most conservative version we can give you, and I think he's going to be funding some of that back, so.
I just hate to see it always kind of on the block. Is there some, I don't know what the process is, maybe next year, so that we can get more.
It's kind of a challenge of electives. I mean, it's, you know, it's the one position where students get a, get to call what they want.
We can't force a bunch of students to consider auto.
I just remember that it was either last year or the year before that it was going to get cut entirely, and.
Community members stepped up.
Especially three years ago, I think.
Was that three years?
Well, my first spring here, I think.
That maybe it was my first year.
Auto shop is a, is one that we've propped up. We've said we wanted it at all schools. I mean, it's been attempted to be cut.
And we had some communities.
And so we, that one we would like to grow.
Right.
But like all these positions, if you, if you don't put it on, then somebody else is going to lose their jobs because you guaranteed a position, you know, you guaranteed certain, like the TOSAs. We don't have a funding source for them.
Right.
But if they're on there, they're coming back somewhere in the organization. A teacher has to be placed somewhere, and they could be bumping, bumping a lot, you know, a lot of different things. And so you're just trying to basically cover yourself in March till you figure out when the dust settles in April where you are. And usually, 85% of these folks, historically, by May, they're back where they're at, and they go through the same thing the next year. Hopefully not with the, with the shop person. But by doing this, it allows us to also leverage and go to other resources and say, hey, this is on the chopping block. What can you do, CTE Foundation? What can you do, community, help us out in these particular things? If we don't list them, then the perception is everything's fine, and everything isn't fine. There aren't enough students right now. Like, we're having conversations with, for example, Pedaluma Junior and Chemwork about the feeder, the full feeder model. And so, you know, with a lack of a feeder model, it's difficult for some of these electives because there is, there is nothing that feeds from the junior high into shop. I mean, to auto shop, there's nothing that feeds into that.
They just have to choose it.
So it's a little bit problematic, but we think we're going to be able to solve a good portion of them.
And then I'll just add, the flip side of this is if you don't PK us before March 15th, you end up kind of building a college schedule, not a student-based, student needs, student interest master schedule. There was, there was an experience in my prior, in a prior district where we were, I think, three total sections down in the art department, and we didn't PK us that year, this district didn't do that. So I had to, this teacher, you know, there was a teacher who's guaranteed a full, a full job and only had two sections to teach. So we had to fill those sections. So there were kids that unfortunately got rerouted from maybe something that they preferred and put into art. And they were, they ended up all being really small, you know, sections. So that affected someone else, right? Like, another department, another teacher, courses that we couldn't add, you know, that we lost a section of something else somewhere else. So it's, again, it's just, I think we're never saying, is that conservative?
We're also up against.
I guess specific dead lookers.
It's preliminary, it's preliminary.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that there's any, I mean, I understand all of the reasoning behind this. I guess I'm just kind of trying to figure out if we're being graded, basically, on our career technical education offerings and our pathways, which were in the midst of a, what do you call it, differentiated something on CTE?
Assistance.
Yeah, for our, our students with disabilities. So I'm just trying to figure out, how do we fill these programs when they're constantly at risk? You know, it's a budget, I understand that, I'm just bringing it up.
I guess there's no answer to it, I guess.
No, it gets harder and harder for students to actually even be able to take electives because, you know, the fact they're piled on with what they need, especially if they're going to college, language becomes an elective, you know? So it, electives always.
But we have lots of cases on it.
Oh, I know that.
Here's the really tricky part. So I think two meetings ago, we had electives that came forward, new electives. And we praised the folks for being innovative and coming up with new electives. Those new electives, if they're put out there to compete, are going to take from somebody else's electives, which means somebody else's electives are going on that list.
No, I brought this up at a meeting, I don't know when that was, one of our first meetings, you know?
It used to be.
But the new electives.
Because being a legislative teacher.
Based on student choice.
You know, I remember vividly, you know, like, everyone trying to.
You fight for students.
You fight for students, and that, it is an issue, it's unfortunate.
But I think you're, I think you're getting to the fundamental, one of the fundamental issues down the road, which is, which is in our model, the way our model is set up, our model is set up, kids get one elective. And there's other, there are other models out there.
Yes, yes.
That allow kids to get more than one elective, but that would require an additional funding source. You know, if it was like, for example, a modified four-by-four.
Four-by-four, yeah.
Which would allow, and then we would be having a very different conversation because students would have access to that. So I think you're right. I mean, it's, our, our challenge is we have this wonderful palette at Casa Grande and at Pedaluma High School, and you get to take one class, all of these options, you get that one.
Well, and it's very difficult to go from one school to the other, right? Because the schedules are a little different.
It is if they're trying to do, not do a concurrent enrollment, yes.
Right. So that would be nice to have it, at least they'd be able to go from school to school.
Yeah.
And my sense, though, is that the electives that come to us, in fact, there's one first reading of a STEM course, is usually based on student request or student preference, am I right? So.
Teachers are just going to give them some work.
Yeah, so. It comes from teachers, but I don't think it's teacher, I think it also comes from students. It's kind of both, because that's what an elective is, so.
So what, so the Casa auto program, for example, was dwindling just a few years ago. And through some CTE Foundation grant funds, and then through some, you know, some roaming of the program, they were able to add sections. They're actually, so the 0.2 auto at Casa, they're looking to fund that with site funds for a full FTE because the CT Foundation grant is ending, they may, you know, they may not get additional funds. So that's an example of, they took a, you know, kind of a dwindling program, built it up. But what you don't see, and it's not an exact one-to-one, but somewhere, in the course offerings, there's one to two less of something somewhere.
Right.
Right? When you get down to something like, when there's only one section of something left, and there was three, that's when you really see it. But it's kind of mixed in, you don't see it, you may not notice it, you may not even know what those kids would be getting.
Well, and one of those things could be ABR, which is really unfortunate.
The other thing is, though, that, and this is an important piece, is that monies that are allocated to the site, site allocations through the LCAP, are not all being spent every year. So when we went away from revenue limit and went to the LCAP, the sites picked up a whole bunch of dollars ongoing, that the whole idea behind that was local control, that they could make some decisions about that. So there are, there are, there is dollars there, not to do a lot of things, but there's a dollar to pick up section here, a section there, and to do some of that work. And so it's not all district-funded, it's also site-funded, dollars. And so, and our high schools got the most site-funding dollars. And we have had many years where sites have left 70, 80, 90,000 dollars that they, that they didn't spend because maybe they had another project they wanted to do or something they were working on.
I guess it doesn't roll over to the next year.
Well, it depends on what's going on in their situation. But there are, there, typically what happens is, like all, like all, all principals, like all principals will do, is they want you to pay for it. But there are monies that we give them specifically for them to make those site-based decisions to, in that case, a great example of that would be using some of that, those dollars if, let's just say, if they can't get the recruiting in place for automotive for that, for that 0.2 section. But our folks are really good about coming if they're in really difficult situations, and they don't want to impact a program, to come to us and plead and say, "We need your help." And we help them more often than not with that. That's not usually the situation. It's usually in these situations, it's, if you look at the elective schedule for, for 2020, it looks different than 2010, and it looks different than 2000. And so over time, kids' interests just naturally change, you know?
Well, grants are way more likely to cover something like an elective or career pathways than English, math, like maybe support for math after school, you know what I mean? But for the main four, I don't think there are any grants out there that are like.
Yeah.
Yeah, more of a one.
Can I ask, clarifying.
Absolutely.
Matthew of the 8.6 FTE, how many of those would you guess is due to declining enrollment as opposed to uncertain funding? The 8.6 FTE? Are we talking about two, maybe?
So the three, the 3.0 at the top is due to uncertain funding.
Oh, okay.
The declining.
Well, the declining at Pedaluma Junior.
Which one is that one?
I think we covered about 2.4.
I think you said 2.4. So they're. Right, they're potentially shrinking by 50-plus kids, and so it's equivalent to about a 2.4 FTE reduction.
It breaks out almost, almost top of the house.
Okay. And those are pretty certain?
I'm hoping to see what's in my eyes.
Thanks.
Okay. Oh, there's a motion on the table, there's so much conversation for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's not a happy five, for sure. Okay, discussion information. William Sevament, first and second quarter report, visit and review of McNear's school, looking good.
Looking good, no misassignments, no, no findings.
No findings, always love to see that. And then, here we go, first reading, new course proposal, STEM, junior high school course.
I'm still very confused about this course. It's like STEM, like, that's huge. Like, what is that? I mean, I saw what it's going to be. Okay, yeah.
So it already exists.
Oh, that's right, it's at the.
It already exists at Pedaluma Junior High, but the, they were using a high school code. So with the new CalPAC system, you have to make sure we're using the proper code, we're using the right state code behind the scenes, the teacher has their credential. So the junior highs have been doing this from time to time. In Aries, you can see every course code that's ever existed, whether it's active, inactive, high school junior high. So they find the word that they like.
Right.
Grab it. So in the audit of all the courses, we realized, okay, you know, you need to use a junior high code, and the course didn't exist, so we had to develop it, bring it forward. So this isn't taking away from anything that exists, it's just making it official. It's not taking any other section.
Okay. After this discussion. For the record, I think we should pick another name.
Okay.
I agree, and there should be an A in there.
For STE, for art?
Yes.
Okay, future business, facilities, transportation, and feminine hygiene products, data collection.
So those three are coming, coming to you in future business?
Okay.
For the record, it's menstrual products, not feminine products, because trans boys have periods too.
Okay.
So those are going to come forward.
Okay. I would also, at some point.
We want to make sure that we, we keep them, we don't want them to fall through the cracks.
Right. I also, at some point, would like to talk about the gate, the testing that we do. I feel it's culturally biased, and there's got to be some other ways to do that. I don't know if there is, but I would think there would be.
We better at least look at it.
And I would like to look into that, I would like to handle, okay? All right, and action on.
Oh, wait a minute. Any other future business?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I would like to see if we can have time for a presentation on environmental literacy. Friends of the River and Watershed Classroom, and we have lots of teachers that do the Watershed Classroom. Kirsten Franklin from McNear has put together a four- or five-minute video on the importance of environmental literacy. It's, it's part of our, I think, part of the LCAP or something, or part of, anyway, part of the state's science.
Right.
It fits right in.
It fits right in. And we've had presentations kind of a little bit off and on, and so I would really like to see that. And, because I really like the idea of environmental literacy.
I think it's essential.
We'll have, we'll have Cliff work with Michelle on a date and get to Kirsten.
Okay.
That would be great.
And then my only other one is on the TOSA work. So last, the last couple of weeks, I've gone to two different things where, that were, you know, partially organized by the TOSAs. For, one was this incredible day with Dr. Victor Rios, when he was at San Antonio. Victor Rios, when he was at San Antonio the whole day. And it wasn't necessarily from them, but they were there and they, you know, it kind of, it was helping these vulnerable students to understand the importance of who they are and to graduate. And, and the other one was the students with disabilities meetings with.
Differentiated.
Yeah, what is it?
Differentiated assistance.
Assistance from school. So I was just, I would love to have a report for them, like, kind of the second week, the second board meeting in April, to give us kind of an understanding of what TOSES has done this year, you know, kind of give us an update, a report, all of what they've done. Oh, I know what the other thing was, was the alternative ed. They put that together. So they did this little showcase over at Petaluma High. It was great, and they had a lot, tons of, tons of families and students there, and they did a lot of work, a lot of outreach, so it just seems like that would be.
Yeah, so we, that was our plan to come and present. They said that you had been contacted and wanted us to move it from May up into April, so we can do it whenever you want to do it.
April's whatever's better.
April, they had suggested the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
That meeting, yeah. Because there is something coming up that they wanted to do before, they wanted to do the presentation before it.
And May's.
I've got it slated for the twenty-first.
Anyway, it would be great.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have a question or a comment, I don't know. So, you know, just reading all these policies and things, and I see that everyone puts in there like their sexual harassment, like, policy, but I don't really see, like, the interventions, like, how are they presenting to students about sexual harassment, what is it, how do you report it? I just didn't see that piece, so.
In the safety plans?
Yeah.
So I don't know. I don't really know what they have to do with that, but.
So the, we can compile something about how, it's a good question, I'm not sure I even know the answer to that.
Joanna and I got it.
We'll talk about that later in our meetings. We'll let, we'll, we'll figure something out on that.
Okay. Joanna and I got a really good, I'll see if I can find it, like, list, like, a checklist of which school should be addressing and responding.
Where would you look that list from?
Well, we had a conversation.
Or like, not them, but one of the presenters.
Oh, okay.
We had a good conversation yesterday with our AP counselors about part of the challenge we have, you know, where sexual harassment fits really well into that, that we're this split personality district, where we don't see half of our students until they get to seventh grade. So it's really difficult to say, what's the continuum? Like, let's just talk sexual harassment. What are the things that you would, you would introduce at a very young age to, embed into your curriculum? And how would you spiral that through the twelfth grade?
Yes.
Because it would be easy in a, in a perfect world, because then we would have, all of our students would start with us at TK. And so we, we're going to have some more conversations with our county consortia, the elementary folks about that. But in the short run, we can talk about, you know, what does that look like at the elementary level for our elementary kids, and then what might, what might that look like at, at the junior high and the high school?
Because we have some feeder schools.
Knowing there's massive gaps there.
Right, a lot of feeder schools, a lot of feeder schools that aren't in our district. So we don't know what they're doing.
We have probably about, I haven't totally counted, but we probably have about eighteen, nineteen feeder schools.
So we can.
Do you say one more?
But starting at our elementary is a pretty good place.
Probably twelve.
So just, just to kind of add to what they're saying. So the, the safety plan is not, there's no template, like the LCAP.
Wait, I was wondering.
We just got that last year, too. So I'm like, why am I also?
Why don't they, yeah.
No template, state doesn't give out a template, but the state does say, these things are required, these things are optional. So like, what you saw on a number of them was just, what's the board policy, right? But since there is no template, most of them, if you notice, most of them follow the same format, it's because they use DTS, the online template that we were using. Some still have their old school one, you know, kind of like that. But definitely, that's something we could add, because we're making the template ourselves. So kind of like how in the SIPSES, you guys had mentioned, you wanted specific information about what do they do for school climate, right? So it wasn't one of the base requirements, but we want to have that in, this is something we could add in as well as part of the safety planning, so, not just what the policy is, but what do they do.
Exactly. And how do they follow that policy? And how do they get kids to?
And what happens if they don't follow that policy?
And, and, well, it's because kids, something can happen, and they don't always know how to.
Well, they don't know what it is.
They don't know what it is, or they know what it is, but they don't know what to do with it.
Well, if they're in the bathroom now, it's posted everywhere. If they read.
That's always helpful.
Okay. Action on items heard in closed session. The board took action on three point six and three point six point one during closed session. Is that?
And what was the action?
The action was that we voted yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Unanimous.
Unanimous.
It was unanimous.